All right, since this is reorganization, I'll start the meeting until we have the chair appointed. So first, the sunshine law, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Alex Karazi?
Here.
Cecile MacIver?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Mustafa Mansray?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Godwin Amalola?
Yeah.
And Chairman Orsini?
Here.
Okay, so we have the oath of office. Has everybody signed the sheets that are before them?
About ready to get the fourth one.
Okay. We have six altogether.
Well, all right. I have five.
Hold it out. You have Michael Orsini?
Doctor Shook.
He just sat down. I'm sorry, doctor. And once they're all submitted, Jim, do you want to lead the oath of office?
Sure, I will.
Who put in Somerset, New Jersey, 08873?
You don't live in town?
You've got a problem.
It comes from the clerk's office.
All right.
All right, well administer the oaths. I state your name.
I, Michael Orsini.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And to the governments
And to the governments.
Established in the United States
Established in the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties of
All the duties of
Planning Board
Planning Board, Class 3 members.
Of the Township of Franklin
Of the Township of Franklin.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I am not free to travel.
Okay, now we're to the nomination and selection of the chairperson. Do we have any nominations?
Yes, I nominate Michael Orsini as chair.
I second him.
Do we have any other nominations?
Close.
All in, close? All in favor?
Aye.
The nays? Right. Chairman Orsini, it's your meeting.
Congratulations.
Now, luckily the mayor wasn't here, he would have put a couple more procedural steps.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everyone. Glad to be back for another year. And appreciate your confidence in my leadership of the planning board. It's been a lot of fun ever since I've been chair, and we've had a good board, so, and we continue to have really quality folk serving, and I thank you for that service as well. I would like to move on to nomination and selection of vice chairperson, and I would like to nominate Cecile MacIver. Any other nominations? I move the nominations be closed. All in favor of Cecile MacIver as vice chair?
Aye.
The nays? No, well, you are.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for your confidence.
We now move to the appointment of the board attorney.
And, Mr. Chairman, we do, per the bylaws, need to interview?
Yes.
The one selection that the planning board has asked to attend for the interview.
Right, so in the interest of transparency, we did receive two. The board has chosen and can choose by law to only interview one of those firms. We chose to interview the firm of Clarkin and Vignolo, who is here tonight, Jim Clarkin. And so if anybody has any questions for Mr. Clarkin, please ask them.
We assume you still wish to serve as our, the board attorney?
Peter and I would be happy to serve again. You're a fine group of people, and everybody lends a lot to the proceedings. Very nice to see, because, and all of the other boards that I'm either the board attorney, or I appear in front of. I'm gonna get people that are sitting there, taking, you guys do a really great job.
Well, thank you, Jim.
And, Mr. Chairman?
And just for formality, I'll ask one question. Are you and Peter able to discharge your duties no differently than in the past? And is your fee any different than in the past?
The answers to those questions are, we will discharge our duties in the same manner. There are no impediments, and the fee structure can stay the same.
And, Mr. Chairman, before the board makes a decision, you do have to open it to the public? For the bylaws?
I would move that the nomination be opened to the public.
Second.
Being no one coming forward, I would move the public hearing be closed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So with that, I would then move that the firm of Clarkin and Vignolo be appointed as our planning board attorney.
In the interest of bipartisanship, I would second the nomination.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Peter and I thank you very much. Look forward to another year.
Thanks, Jim. So your first duty can be to swear in our director of planning, Mark Healy.
And solemnly swear that during all the proceedings...
Okay, Christine, you can go ahead and just do our regular roll call. Again. Because that's what it says on here.
Councilman Chase?
Now that we're really here, yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi? Cecile MacIver?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yeah.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas? Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Godwin Amalola?
Yeah.
And Chairman Orsini?
Here. Minutes of the regular meeting from December 6th, are there any comments, corrections, questions, or other edits to make? Any comments missing, Ted?
I move to approve the minutes of December 6th.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions. So the first one is Sycamore Development, PLN 1700008, and this is only for the concept part of it.
Move to approve the concept part of it, which was explained to me that this is the, for instance, the selection of the 20,000 square foot instead of the 15,000 square foot concept.
Correct. Do I have a second? I guess I'll provide that. I'll second it.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
I believe I was not at the last meeting, so I'm not sure that I can vote on that.
No, it was not the last meeting, it was the concept meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you were there.
Okay, in that case, yes.
Okay. Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Second resolution, 3G developers, PLN 1700012.
Move that I wasn't at that.
Uh, let's see, the available people to vote on this, or to do anything with it, are myself, Councilman Chase, Carl Hauck, Godwin, and Jennifer. So I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Chairman, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And lastly, the last resolution we have is Paradise Adult Healthcare, PLN 1700013.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Second it.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi? Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. So, very important discussion we have here, in deference to Christine, so the folks who are responsible for transcribing our minutes have difficulties occasionally with the volume in the microphones, and, you know, the pronunciation of certain things, which, again, they can probably go back for that, but we still have people that lean kind of far away from it, right? And is there, is there any other particular problem?
Yeah, what she's saying is, a lot of times, if you're speaking, kind of like where I am, if you turn your head or something, she loses the volume, and it takes her a lot of time to try to get the minutes done, which causes you guys not to have the minutes in a timely fashion. Also, when people are coming from the public, they need to say and spell their first and last names, even the people at the table, so that she has them, you know, like Mike Ford, engineer, or something like that, so that when she's writing the minutes, she can have them as complete as possible. So she's asking both boards that you bring the mic to your face, and that you do not lean back in your chair, or turn this way, because you guys can hear already that you can't hear me as well as you can hear me now. So I've also turned up the volume, too, in the order to help her.
Okay, so we don't need a resolution, other than maybe a New Year's resolution to try to obey that. Thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
With that, I think we have, we have no hearings tonight. We could open it up to the public? Do we really? Normally, I mean...
Let the record reflect that there is no public present.
Otherwise, it's just an exercise in Robert's rules of order, I think.
They sent you that.
Yeah, but that was for the attorney. This is for the general, because we don't have any hearings to open it to the public. So we have one item, which is going to be Vince talking about corporate area zoning.
As I believe everyone's aware, because we sent it all to you last year, the council has made economic development priority in the last year and a half, that we now have a standing committee of councils, economic development. I changed jobs last year to be appointed the economic development director, and we went outside, and we had a consultant do a community marketing analysis that was sent to y'all last year. The link was sent to you, and as a result of that, they also did a strategic zoning and economic development recommendations. That was the subject of a public discussion that several of you, including the chairman, both Bob and Thomas, chairman of the planning and zoning board, sat up at the front of the table, of course, Councilman Chase there, I think, and several other you all were there, and our consultant went over various recommendations in regard to some strategic plan and structural things that we could do. What we're here to talk about tonight is the recommendations that the report made regarding our CB, M1, and M2 zones. We will, in probably in the next month or so, be giving you some initial thoughts on what the plan had to do in regard to Hamilton Street. That's a little bit more of an in-depth discussion, because it result, involves breaking up the area into three different zones. Mark, in a few minutes, will go over the substance of the recommendations that Mark and I have gotten from the strategic plan. The basic idea is to make it, make it simple, to more accurately reflect the type of land use patterns that we expect to occur, and as, you know, Jim will mention, most of the state, if not the whole state, and most of the country is having a big problem with old office buildings, where people are no longer working in these million-square-foot office buildings, and we need to take a look at some of the different ideas of what can be done. This partially addresses that. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mark, and he can go over the recommendations. What we do plan on doing, as Mark will mention that, is that if everyone is okay with this general outline, we will have prepared for you a master plan amendment in the next month or so, and we'll have a hearing to go over this, so we can adopt this, and we could send the ordinance over to council for adoption.
So as Vince said, Forward Planning is the consulting firm that is doing the economic development, is our economic development consultant. The plan, again, that was in your packet, this is, in specific, the zoning and economic development recommendations. They made a number of recommendations with respect to the corporate business zone and the M1 and M2 zones. Vince and I basically locked ourselves in the conference room for the better part of the day, evaluating those recommendations, and then based on our collective experience, you know, as planner, and it's Vince's experience with being the zoning officer and economic development director, you know, basically evaluated their comments, and then added our own, based on our own experience. So I'll go over quickly, the, we gave you a memo dated January 11th, which basically outlined some of the major recommendations in the Forward Planning study, and then also our additional observations and recommendations. Firstly, just overall, the Forward Zoning Study identified a number of key factors that play into this. As Vince said, you know, one of the key things is the office vacancy issue. We've discussed this in the context of the reexamination, which we did, and master plan reexamination in 2016. The fact that with changes in technology, changes in business practices, Franklin is not alone in experiencing large office vacancies, and every, every expert that has evaluated this issue, including our own, has basically said that this issue is not going to turn around. This is not a recession issue, this is a permanent change in how, with technology and business practices, it's not going to turn around. So we need to address that. Our corporate business zone has, it's a large part of our municipal tax base, so it's important that we position that area in a way that, you know, continue to create jobs and continue to support our commercial tax base. They also raised a number of issues, for example, the, or trends, I should say, for example, the raise, the rise in e-commerce, and the need and the demand for warehousing and light distribution, and Franklin, because of its regional location, is kind of primed for that, and we've seen that application. We've actually had a few applications before the zoning board for warehousing and light distribution in our corporate business zone, but since it's not permitted, they had to go through the steps of getting use variances for that. So as far as the Forward Planning Study, some of the major, main recommendations, they talked about expanding the M2 zone. The M2 zone is the light manufacturing zone, permits, again, distribution, warehousing, office buildings. Because of the trends that I just stated, the thought was that there to be more of a desire or demand for those type uses, so expanding the M2 zone. They recommend that we look at consolidating the M1 and M2 zones, and even create, or consolidating them with the corporate business zone. Right now, so I'm going to go through just real quickly what these different zones are, where they're located, and this is, again, in the memo. I'll point out first, you can see with the little pointer here, the one large M1 zone. So again, this is, I call this one the Randolph, Cotton Tail, M1 Zone, Pierce Street, Cotton Tail, Schoolhouse, Randolph. So this is, you know, warehousing, light, light manufacturing, light industry, and that's on minimum five-acre lots. A very similar zone, in fact, almost exactly the same in terms of permitted uses, is the M2 zone. Really, the only difference between these two zones is that the M1 zone requires five acres, and for reasons that neither Vince nor I can figure out, because we can't figure out, you know, any real planning rationale, the M2 zone requires two acres. So this is two acres, and this is five acres. Otherwise, they're, in terms of uses, they're almost exactly the same.
So, Mark, that actually brings up a question. So you think about a use like house foods, right? It'd be hard to fit that, I think, on two acres, wouldn't it? What are they on?
Well, it's, it's...
If somebody wanted to come in and do something large, and our lot area was the M2, which is two acres, instead of the M1, which is five, would they, they would need to go for a variance, right?
No, they would need a larger lot. I mean, we do, we have, we have properties, for example, the Nissan, I think this came before this planning board, that was a 20-acre lot, I think. You know, if you're going to build a million-square-foot facility, you're not putting a million-square-foot facility on two acres.
Right, so it's just a minimum, it's not...
It's a minimum. So if you want, so, again, one of the recommendations is to basically consolidate the M1 and M2 zone to allow smaller-scale operations. The setbacks are still going to be in place, there's still going to be buffering, there's still going to be, well, buffering, there's still going to be building coverage and impervious coverage limitations, but it would allow some more, some additional but smaller-scale facilities. But again, if it's going to be some 500,000-square-foot facility, they have to find a big site to accommodate that. So that's the M1 zone, the M2 zone, this is, you know, basically centered on Elizabeth Ave. There's another M2 zone along World's Fair Drive, so if you can picture when you drive down those roads, that's what those zones are. There is actually a little M2 zone on Cedar Grove, where the Pro Cure is, and that, those office buildings in front. That's M2. Veronica and Roosevelt?
Right.
That's another M2 zone, and there actually is another M2 zone off of Hamilton Street that has a few light industrial uses. So those are the M2 zones, and then lastly, the corporate business, that is basically centered along Davidson, Pierce, and I can't read, what is that, what road is that? I can't read it.
Atrium.
Atrium Drive.
It's Atrium. So, and that is, that's where you see the, you know, the large, the five-story office buildings, predominantly office hotels. So that's, I wanted to give you the kind of landscape of this is, these are the areas that we're talking about. So again, our Forward Planning Study talked about expanding the M2 zone, consolidating these zones, perhaps creating, eliminating the distinction between the M1, the M2, and the CB, and perhaps making one M-zone, or renaming it the M1 Zone, and just having this, basically the same uses permitted throughout this one larger zone, rather than kind of breaking it down, at this point, somewhat arbitrarily. They recommended broadening the list of uses, allowing, considering indoor sports and recreation, showroom retail. We actually just had a meeting just yesterday, frankly, with a warehouse or light manufacturing facility that wants to have a retail component have tours of their facility. Right now, that's not, that's not actually, not permitted. But, you know, from an economic development perspective, and frankly, you know, there's really no reason not to permit that, as long as the site can accommodate it. Assisted living facilities, this is a recommendation that, that's actually consistent with our master plan from 2016, kind of acknowledging the growing, the aging population in Franklin. And educational institutions, I think what this means really is things like, you know, karate schools, CrossFit, things like that. I don't think this is pertaining to actual schools, but more, you know, again, things like karate schools, stuff like that.
They have schools there.
But stuff like, this is, this is, again, this isn't recommending that we permit that, that, I think that's still a use variance. This is not recommending we change that. This is saying, things like CrossFit, things like karate schools, trade schools, things like, that's, that's what this recommendation is saying, and those are uses that, you know, you can see going into an office building, for example, that maybe has some vacancy, and maybe there's some trade school wants to occupy the first floor, permitting that. There's a warehouse, and they want to use 25% of it for CrossFit, as long as there's enough parking. Or they want, or it's a large warehouse, and they want to use a large percentage of it for a Planet Fitness. As long as there's enough parking, and that's one of the things, that's one of the specific recommendations we looked at, as long as there's enough parking on site, why not allow a Planet Fitness in part of a warehouse on World's Fair Drive?
Who decides if there's enough parking on site?
Well, the ordinance does. It'd be based on, we'd have to come up with exactly what the parking requirement would be for, for example, a Planet Fitness. We just know from experience that those uses experience significant parking demands, particularly in the late afternoon. Yeah, there's going to be standards that we can find, but usually it's based on a square footage basis.
So one question I had, Mark, was even if maybe we potentially increase the showroom retail, even beyond 10%, because, I mean, you could imagine that, you know, what if you had like a, I don't know, sort of a high-end dealership, or a, you know, Tesla thing come in, I mean, you might want to use more of that for the showroom part than something else. I'm just, you know, now...
That's...
Jim, you were saying that, oh, that was it?
Yeah, in, in Piscataway, and first of all, let me echo Vince's comments and Mark's. We are doing exactly the same thing in Piscataway, along Centennial Avenue, which is a corridor very similar to yours. We've got aging office buildings that are obsolete, we're getting slaughtered on tax appeals. And, you know, we, we're here to be forward-thinking. Bottom line is, we changed the maximum percentage of showroom space from 5% up to 15.
Yeah, and it's funny, because I, or it's interesting, I should say, because I did not know Piscataway was doing that, but to be honest, we're in competition with towns like Piscataway.
I know.
Yeah, we don't want to be able to, if somebody comes here and says, "We want to do some type of use" that would otherwise be appropriate, and if the, and if the site could reasonably accommodate it, but we have to say, "Well, right now it's not permitted," and then you make a call to Piscataway, and they say, "Move right in, all you need is the permit, fill out a form," and... So that's what we're talking about. This is keeping these areas, the M1 Zone, M2 Zone, corporate business zone, competitive against the other towns that are looking for these same, we want to keep these buildings occupied, we want to keep these buildings taxed, because I know we are also experiencing the same issues with tax appeals. And, you know, a lot of this zoning came around, especially the corporate business zone, in the 80s, early 80s, with the office boom, and, you know, like seeds, you know, these five-story office buildings popped up, and for 25 years, they worked fine. But it's a different world, so we need to reevaluate our zoning, reposition these areas, be more flexible. And as I go through this, there are certain protections that we will recommend, so why don't I get back in, and then we can continue the discussion. So, some observations, again, we observed that the M1, M2, and even the corporate business zone permitted pretty much the same mixture of uses. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, there are some exceptions. Again, warehousing and light manufacturing is not permitted in the corporate business zone, but again, we've had a few use variances, so there's some pressure to do that. The M1 Zone, M1 and M2 zones permit extended-stay hotels, but not regular hotels or conference facilities. Same type thing. Somebody has, there's an office, a warehouse building, and somebody wants to convert that to a conference facility or banquet hall, and if the site could otherwise accommodate it, there's enough parking, why wouldn't we permit that? Limited retail sales. Right now, it's, I think it's 5% actually, is in our ordinance, and that's only in the M1 Zone, but not the M2 Zone. Why? That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So we can look at going up to some higher percentage, and allowing it in both zones. Indoor rec is permitted in the M1 and M2, but not in the CB. So it's kind of, you see kind of the same type, you know, issues here. So if somebody wants to come in and wanted to convert the first floor of an office building and allow some type of Planet Fitness, I just keep bringing that up just because it's the only one I can think of, but why not? Again, if the site can accommodate it, why not have Planet Fitness in an office building in the atrium development? And again, staff is unaware of any reason why we would have five acres in the M1 Zone, and only two acres in the M2 Zone.
Mr. Chairman, I think that goes back to the size of the properties before they were developed many years ago.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, that you had larger tracts of land in the area where you had the M5... M five and, uh, smaller tracts and, and not entirely, but in much of the M two, you had smaller tracts. I think that, but that's not necessarily a good reason now, and that's, that's just a historical thing.
Thank you. At least there, there was some basis for it. Okay, so there are recommendations. Um, having, having reviewed this in the forward zoning study, consolidating the M one, M two and CB zones into one zone, uh, with a set of permitted uses, uh, you know, one set of permitted uses. That would mean that all the, all the uses that are currently permitted in the M one, M two and CB zones would be then permitted in this new zone. Data centers, we so knows would be permitted. Showroom retail, I put up to ten percent or we put up to ten percent. But again, we can talk about having more, uh, assisted living and similar facilities. Trade schools and skills oriented uses, again, we talked about CrossFit, karate schools, those type uses. Fitness centers, subject to specific parking requirements, again, which we've talked about, and then also sit down restaurants. That's something that we might wanna think about, um, permitting in, in, in those zones.
They have the Applebee's, right, in front of, and the.
There's the Applebee's, but that's not standalone. Technically, they had to connect it because it has to be accessory to a hotel.
But other than that, it would be something like that, right?
It'd be something like that, but, you know, maybe allowing them, so they don't have to have this connection to the hotel. They can locate out front right along the street.
Right.
And then we'll come up with, um, some standards. We, we stressed, we specifically put down sit down restaurants as opposed to fast food. And drive-throughs, so we might wanna talk about, you know, as we get into the ordinance eventually, how we define that and, or if you wanna make that distinction, but our thought was in particular, sit down restaurants is something that people have always talked about, talked about for a long time, is something that we need more of. So, a- as opposed to fast food, uh, so again, as we talk about the ordinance, we might wanna make that distinction.
So, Mark, Mark, just one question, if I may. So the regular schools are not allowed in, in, in these zones? So if, for example, a charter school wants to expand and they wanna build a bigger school in this area?
Schools, schools and places of worship are permitted in almost every other zone except for the M one, M two and corporate business zones. So to the extent we do have, we do have some schools in those zones, they're by use variance.
So you have the trade schools, but not the regular school.
Yeah, trade schools, so this is, uh, that, you know, in my opinion, I think a trade school is very similar to an office use. People are coming to, 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 you know, an office, classroom type setting, sitting in front of computers, learning a trade, learning a skill, as opposed to children being brought into an industrial area, school buses, all of that.
But we have put Central Jersey Charter School, and I mean, it, it's not to say that can't happen because there, these things exist now. Just like successfully, I think, I don't, I'm not aware of otherwise. We have a mixed use flower store on Veronica Avenue, you know, with a different use. Uh, we have the, uh, Davidson Avenue, Sixth Avenue Electronics with a retail store in front of a distribu-, as part of a distribution center. You have Benner Plumbing on, what is it, Jiffy Lane? It's a retail section and a warehouse. So I, I think we've shown those things and be successful, and I think it's a good idea to be able to do it, for those people to be able to do it easier. The one concern that I have, and I don't know how much or if it requires discussion, is warehousing. Offhand, I, I'd kind of like to see it, it broken in, down into size. For instance, i- i- if we're looking to attract warehousing where there's a five or six hundred thousand square foot building, like to see that somehow it's limited to a virtually a direct two eighty-seven access. So we don't have all the truck traffic traveling all through Franklin Township to get from a warehousing distribution point to a major highway. And maybe there's a, a place for, I don't know what the cutoff is, maybe there's a place for a smaller sized warehouse in with what you're talking about, corporate business. I, I just think we need to tread carefully with the warehousing thing because the wrong operation with a huge amount of traffic, truck traffic, could just work the opposite, destroy the whole.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand the issue you're talking about, and we, we can absolutely look into that. Right now, um, warehousing is permitted in, again, the, the M one and M two zones. Which are, and the only change that we'd be talking about is, is at this point, would be adding it, you know, warehousing distribution to the corporate business zone. And I don't think that would raise that issue you're talking about, because that has immediate access to two eighty-seven. Let me just finish real quick. I, I think the issue, the issue that you raised has come up in certain other issues, other sites like, Elizabeth Avenue, south of New Brunswick Road, that is an existing M two zone. The M two zone on Roosevelt and Veronica, because those, those, um, if there's warehousing or distribution there, in order to get to two eighty-seven, you have to travel through some non-industrial areas. I think that, I, I remember some, an application or two where that issue has been raised. So in order to address the issue you're talking about, we would have to look at, it's not the changing the zones that pops up, it's, it's, we'd have to define the, the distribution use and the amount of truck traffic that would come from that particular use. Is that, am I capturing your comment?
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's the idea I'm getting at. The other thing, uh, I'm, I wanna offer is that it's also circulation, but it also has to do with exactly what you're talking about in corporate business zones and M, certain M one zones and so on. If we want to encourage this, I know there's a lot of resistance beyond the township level. But I think that we should put a formal comment or recommendation in the, in with all of this, that a traffic signal be restored at Wilson, uh, World's Fair Drive and Eastern Avenue. Just like it was for years. Makes everyone have different access to two eighty-seven. And it opens up the whole area. I understand what the county says, what the state says and all this other stuff, but it was there and it was successful.
And I, I, I think, you know, you just hired your consultant to do, uh, the transportation element. I think that's more appropriate to talk about in, in that.
I agree, but this came up in a lot of discussion. There was a lot of discussion about this in, in terms of an application with the Travelodge in that area right there. And that hinders our opportunity to further economic development in that area. And so I agree with you, it is transportation, it is a traffic expert, but it's, in my mind, it's tied directly to this too. And all I'm saying is possibly down the road, a recommendation, a comment, some kind of an official comment on the part of the planning board. Might start getting people to think differently and move on it. I might be dead, you know, but and, and again, I wanna echo what was said by a couple of other people at one point, at one time during one of the hurricanes. That was the only access to get out of town on two eighty-seven. Because everything else was flooded in that area. You know, it, it was just a stupid decision, and now the state and the county won't back off on it because they'll admit being stupid. Sorry for my French.
I spoke over Mr. Mettler before.
That's all right. I would echo what Bob said. The one time I had to get to the airport and it was flooded and the only way I could go was down, uh, World's Fair Drive and get out that way to two eighty-seven. So he's quite, Bob is quite right about that. CB zone, going back to ancient history, 'cause I can remember when that was created. Originally, we had the M one, the M two and the M three, which was the mining district down the Trap Rock. And, uh, CB, there one of the first businesses into Franklin, when Franklin decided that it needed to have a business component, uh, which was somewhat late in the game, was a trucking company, the Cooper Jarrett Trucking Company, which was indeed located on Davidson Avenue. And, uh, they, they decided to move away. And, uh, a number of people on the council, Phil Beecham, I think, was one at the time, said, well, this is our opportunity to upgrade Davidson Avenue in terms of truck traffic and other things. So that led to the creation of the CB zone. Now, you're quite right, that was thirty years ago. And, and times have changed as to, as to what people want. But, uh, this is something, I think Bob is quite right, we need to be quite careful about what we do, because, uh, Davidson Avenue, with I think one exception, is really a first class business area. And we don't want to do something that would destroy that, uh, ambience. Beyond that, I, I think this is a very worthwhile discussion and.
Yeah, I, I.
Now, I have somewhat the same concern that if we had warehousing on Davidson Avenue, that that might be looked at as taking down the tone of the road and making the hotels less attractive. At present, you know, Davidson Avenue is different from all of the M one and M two. I agree that a lot of the uses that you've mentioned would be appropriate for, uh, Davidson Avenue and all parts of the CB zone. But I'm not sure that warehousing as such wouldn't, uh, it might lower the tone of Davidson Avenue and result in lower valuations.
Yeah, we, we, we actually had this discussion, Mark and I, and we've had this discussion with some of the hotelers and given the use of our hotels, which is primarily business travel, we're not a, like a resort town, even though we have more hotel rooms than any place else, except for Atlantic City. If you look, for instance, at the end of Davidson Avenue, when they're going fifty million dollar renovation to the biggest hotel in town, it's located right next to a warehouse, right across the street from a manufacturing facility, and there, there is, there is no issue. The, the concern, the concern is real. But in this new age, and especially where we're positioned, as long as the manufacturing facility is clean and we don't have a smokestack, which we don't have anymore, and the warehousing is clean, which is the one the zoning board just approved, you know, at the old convention center. That, you can't possibly have a place that's busier than that. They ship out hundreds of thousands of items a week, and there is no issue with the hotels, because the manufacturing and the warehousing we have now is clean, the type of hotel uses and the people that stay. If you look at now where they're building hotels, they're building hotels and industrial parks. Because the land is a little bit cheaper than it is in other areas. And those type of travelers, when you're traveling to go to a business, you don't care if you're located next to a warehouse, because you're not, you don't care if you're looking out the window. You really don't. It's, it is a real concern. We've discussed it, we've had some discussions with the, the hotelers. And if you know how Davidson Avenue is, I mean, what's there doesn't really lend itself right now to some, you know, million square foot, five hundred truck a day type of facility. And if it did, and we came here, you know, to the planning board, I think the planning board would take a look at putting the, the appropriate issues on the table and making sure that we didn't detract from any of these. So we've had that discussion. It is a, it is a real area of concern. I'm less concerned about it because of the trends that we've seen in the last few years.
I'm not concerned about the buildings. We can make them look as nice as we need to, but you can't hide the trucks. And I understand what you're saying on, everything on Davidson Avenue, but how about truck traffic past the palace while a wedding or something is going on?
I don't, and I don't see, I don't know what property there would lend itself to a type of trucking outfit that would work in that area. They would much rather be in another area on a bigger, on a bigger parcel, because there isn't, most, honestly, most of that area is already developed or will be rehabbed. And if you're not gonna take an old office building, you know, a million square foot office building and rip it down and build a warehouse, because financially, that doesn't make any sense. You, you can't do that. It costs too much money for the land. You may rehab that building or knock down a portion of it, but you're not gonna be able to build that type of, it doesn't make any financial sense. So, eh, your concern is real. Practically, I don't see that, that happening. And if it, if something like that did happen and you were concerned about it, I think you would put the proper controls on it at the planning board level. Mark and I will take a, a closer look at that before we go to see if there's any other controls that we can put in that would help alleviate those issues.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Couple of comments, if I can, from our experience in Piscataway. We have limited our warehouse and fulfillment centers, with one exception, to be within one half mile of a Interstate two eighty-seven interchange. And only where there was a four lane highway, two lanes in each direction. And only where there was adequate traffic signals. And, uh, a study that indicated that there would not be a sharp reduction in the levels of service. The, uh, the tone, I understand Ted, what you're saying, and to some degree, Piscataway, is, is a little bit different and a little bit like Franklin. Uh, our hotel people don't seem to be concerned, but we're concerned that we want Centennial Avenue to con- to continue to have that positive look, so that we're going to continue to be able to attract other redevelopers to take over these aging office buildings. And what we've done is we've taken all the truck bays and faced them to the rear, so that they are not facing Centennial Avenue. A few other points, um, we actually, okay, in the case of the GE Healthcare Campus, nineteen acres, six buildings, they left to go to Massachusetts because New Jersey doesn't provide any incentives for the pharmaceutical industry. And a redeveloper has come forward, will demolish all of these buildings and, uh, construct a two hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse and fulfillment center. Another interesting point, uh, we have two applications for forty thousand and fifty thousand square foot warehouses. We're not getting, we're not always getting the behemoths, okay? We've got our Dow Chemical site, which is two point two million. I don't know if any of you read, Best Buy took seven hundred thousand of it, okay? But there is apparently still a niche market for the smaller ones, so you could get something on Davidson.
We're, we're, you know, as the report points out and as everyone knows, because of where we're located halfway between New York and Philly on this incredible interstate highway, the forty, fifty, seventy thousand square foot warehouses, where someone wants one here, one in twenty miles, you know, the Walmarts, the Amazons of the world, you know, uh, the old convention center, that's exactly what that is. They ship, separate corporate, they ship for Amazon. They're not owned by Amazon, they ship for Amazon. And it's a relatively smaller warehouse, and they're incredibly busy now. But if you look at that warehouse and you, and you see, is there any impact on that street? There is very little, because when it came before the zoning board, the zoning board put the proper controls in place, as Jim talked about. A, a lot of, a lot of it goes to on how it looks, and that's pretty easy. You put everything, everything in the back, you screen it appropriately. And let's face it, Davidson Avenue does actually, probably at this point, has the least amount of traffic on that road it's ever had since we've had it built out, because we no longer have thirty thousand people working on that street. So the ability for it to absorb, even if there has to be more truck traffic, is much greater. And honestly, uh, you can't have much better access, the two eighty-seven, than Davidson Avenue. You, you really can't. But we can, uh, everything that's mentioned, or we could surely take a closer look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just think is, you know, kind of to, to wrap it up, I, I think, I think in general, now that I, um, am thinking back and, and remembering, um, the consultant that we, that we, you know, when they first came in, you know, they're talking about how to attract things like, uh, you know, soccer and basketball, like a Monroe Sports Center or something like that. I think the general gist of what I hear is that, you know, we, we just keep it mindful that, you know, those kind of uses. I think the general gist of what I hear is that, you know, we, we just keep it mindful that, you know, those kind of uses, while everything you're saying is true, you know, there may be a character, for lack of a better word, of a street or a neighborhood in that area where we would want to keep a certain way that's not really commensurate with a warehouse use. And that there may be other places where we, you know, would want to encourage it. Now that said, everything you say about warehouses and the things they can do with them, and the engineering controls you can put on, and what Jim said is true. But, you know, what, what Jim said about like Centennial Avenue kind of rings true to me. Because, right, there's a certain ambiance you want there. So I mean, I would just think about that. I think that's kind of what everybody is, is sort of saying. And certainly, there's ways, and you would just outline a few of them, where you can put controls in your ordinances to make sure that that's what you get.
Yeah, I, I, I feel, you know, very confident that we can address both the, the truck issue as well as the, the character issue. This is Davidson Avenue. One, one of the things that, in my opinion, that Franklin has, is one of the things that's created the charac- World's Fair Drive has somewhat of a similar thing, where basically you have a suburban character to, to the industrial park. And, and that comes from your zoning requirement, that not only do you have a fifty-foot setback, but you can't have parking within it. And that's, that's that, you drive down Davidson and you see grass and landscaping to either side. Now, I, I just picked on this, I picked this side here. This is, you know, here is a large, you know, there's your typical kind of corporate office building. Right next door, and I just picked this randomly, I didn't do this on purpose. And right next to it, this is in the corporate business zone, it's probably a holdover from maybe whatever was owned before. That's, that's, that's a distribution use or some type of warehouse. You know, the building itself is, is, I mean, it's, it's nicely landscaped. It has a, you know, I'm not sure if that's fifty feet, but you probably drive by and you don't even notice it. And the, the character is maintained, of the character of the roadway. This is a warehouse right across the street. So I point, I point that out because we already have, to a degree, the zone already has that there. There already are some of these, you know, older buildings, this looks like a warehouse to me. I don't think it's an office building, but it has the appearance of a warehouse. Setback fifty feet, it has trees in the front, maybe some of the trees have died. But we can, we can, you know, we've already recommended that we maintain that, that setback, that you not have, allow parking and not have other, you know, utilities, what have you, in the front yard setback. And we can also look at having some landscaping, specific landscaping requirements for that frontage. And then once you have it, it's somewhat out of sight, out of mind, as long as you're driving down and it looks really nice as you're driving by. And as long as we address the, the distribution, the truck issue. And I, I think that is something I do recommend we look at. Again, I feel confident we can address those. Couple other key points, just to wrap it up. We're also going to look at the buffering requirements and the setback requirements. There are certain areas where these zones are but residential zones. So obviously, we'd want to maintain those larger setbacks and larger buffering, buffer standards where they adjoin residential zones. Lastly, there's a couple of footnotes that exclude or allow hotels to go up to twelve stories for various reasons, including community impact. And I think just overall, the, I guess, lack of, perceived lack of demand for hotel use. And I think just competitive, you know, I don't know if we necessarily want to encourage more twelve-story hotels. I think that would, you know, hurt some of the existing smaller four-story hotels. So we would recommend getting rid of that exception, making hotels similar to the same height requirement as all the other permitted uses. And for whatever reason, the hotels are exempt from the floor area ratio requirement, which is the percentage of building mass, that actually controls building mass. So again, I don't, we don't see any reason why hotels should be exempt from the same requirements of all of these other uses. So we'd recommend getting rid of those exceptions. And then lastly, we'd, we'd have to look at the setback and the parking requirements. There are some, the report mentions some certain uses like offices and other things where maybe the parking requirements are a little too high considering the, the current business practices of these office uses. So that's, in a nutshell, that's the overall concept. We'll look at the issues that the planning board raised tonight. If the board is agreeable, we'll prepare a master plan amendment that'll address this issue. And at the same time, so you can look at the, we'll prepare zoning ordinance, a draft zoning ordinance, so you can review the zoning ordinance at the same time you're reviewing the master plan. And we can review that at a subsequent meeting, perhaps in, second meeting in February, maybe March.
Mark, just one question, if I may, Chairman. With these changes, what will be the impact on the value, property values? Especially if there's some residential area?
Well, there's no, there's no residential areas that are being, there's no residential areas being rezoned here. This is just changing one type of business to another type of business.
Right, but the residential area that are close to these areas, now that you're going to have trucks and warehouses and so forth.
Well, you know, again, I think, I think, I think the board made it pretty clear that, I think that, that, what we're going to really aim for with this ordinance is to add the flexibility to it, to allow businesses. I think we want to allow, I think the main thing is, we want to allow businesses that we'd like to have here and that are not going to have a significant impact. So we're going to look, so this is, you know, this will be our job, and it'll be your job as the planning board in looking at the ordinance to see if there's enough adequate protection in terms of, you know, these issues we talked about. You know, we're, we're going to look at keeping as, as, you know, larger setbacks and larger buffers where they adjoin residential uses. And in some, in some ways, I think the setbacks and the buffering requirements may actually be more than, because some of the zones and the M1s, I, I forget the exact requirement. But in one zone right now, it might be only twenty-five feet. And the other zone, for whatever reason, it's seventy-five feet. But we may recommend that all of the zones say seventy-five feet. So in some ways, the buffering may actually increase from what is currently required. And again, we're going to look at the issue of the trucks and, and see if there's some way that we can better define the uses and differentiate between different types of warehouse and distribution use in terms of, you know, some that are, some types that might be light traffic or light truck versus heavy truck type uses. And seeing if we can put some controls and attract, and put those in the areas where they're more appropriate. But that's going to be, again, that's going to be our job and your job to look at those as we go through the master plan and zoning ordinance.
Just a quick, oh, sorry, Jim.
Oh, just a quick question for my own clarification. Earlier on, you had talked about increasing showroom percentage for manufacturing. Is, for my own clarification, is there any drawback to increasing the showroom percentage? Again, you're talking about flexibility and allowing businesses to come in. If you limit it at ten and someone wants fifteen, does it make it that much more detrimental from a, from a planning perspective?
I think is, you know, I think really, we could take it where Jim said it. I, I think typically, the standard is five. I think what you're finding is the new businesses want a higher percentage because they have the ability to do it. And fifteen, I'm sure they took a look at that. I think Mark and I will take a look at that. It's probably what we're going to come up with is fifteen, because they probably took that effort. There is no big drawback. The difference between five and fifteen gives them a little bit more. The idea is to allow them to sell, like, let's say, you know, one of the warehouses, you know, had ten thousand square feet. The amount of traffic that they have for that tip, typically is minimal, but enables them to showcase some of their stuff or get rid of some of the stuff. A lot of times, a warehouse gets stuff and they're getting ready to ship it. And boom, the market changes. And I have a good friend who runs a couple warehouses. They, they do shoes from all, all over, all different manufacturers. And boom, they have a hundred thousand of these shoes. And guess what? The market dries up. And they don't want to sell them in a store because it goes to the valuation. So a lot of times, they do, they actually take off like the little coach things, they rip off those things, and they sell them as seconds for one-third of the price. So those get out in the market, they get some additional revenue. And they don't do the same type of marketing that, you know, your typical commercial store does. So the, the actual impact is typically minor.
Jennifer, the concern that we looked at was traffic. Because generally, the retail will bring you more traffic. But we find that it, it really is not that much more. It, it, so far, our experience has been, it's not an issue.
Yeah, I, I think.
I, I know that we have some retail minor uses along Veronica by variances from god knows how long ago. And probably when I was on the zoning board. But, so it is often desirable. But, and, and it will probably be more desirable on Veronica than on Davidson just because it's closer to a lot more population.
Oh, that's true. So I have a question, Vince. Do you, is economic development director, do you market? These, I mean, remote Franklin, far, more wide to like attract businesses?
Well.
The reason, you'll see why I asked.
We don't, we don't actually have what you could call a marketing arm of, of the township. Our, my job and our job is to get the information out to developers and to the real estate market. So people know, like, when we make this change, we let people know that it's there. And we let the owners of the property know that now they have different options. So when they market their property, you know, because we don't have a, you know, we don't pay someone every year to market everything. The idea is to get the, to get the information out. And one of the things, one of the things we will be doing, and we didn't talk about it, we're going to be doing a branding for, for this area.
That's kind of where I was going with this, yeah.
We're, we're, that's part of the recommendations in here. If you remember, you were there.
Yeah, yeah.
We talked about that. Our consultant is in the process of giving us proposals. So in the next three or four months, he'll come up with a branding for that area. And we'll incorporate it, and as Ted knows, the council, the Economic Development Committee is committed to putting monies, to put signage and whatever else, so that that becomes a place. And it's not just, oh, Franklin has this, but it becomes a place. And anytime you make it a place, it's a lot easier to market that. Whether we're doing it or the real estate market is, is, is doing that.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted to know.
We're, we're, we're in the process, I just met with Todd today, to go over his proposal on how he's going to be doing that.
Because where I was going with that, too, is, you know, rather than come up with a dry name like the M1 or M2 or, you know, whatever sequel is, you need to come up with some acronym, right?
We're, we're, we're looking, we're looking at giving it some sexier name.
Yeah.
But in addition to that, we will have, you know, whether we call it the Franklin Business and Industrials, what, I, that'll be done. That's where we're hiring Todd to call that area something.
Okay.
So it'll be branded, we'll get a logo, you know, your typical logo. We'll put, you know, monument signs or whatever that the report says to say, this is, this is a sensible, so you'll know when you're in, you're in there, that you're, you're there.
Right.
May I, just one suggestion. I mean, we heard a little bit about what Piscataway has done. And I wonder whether another township in the area has done. And it might be a good idea to look at what they have done and maybe leverage some of the good things that they have been successful, so we don't have to reinvent.
And, and we, and the, the report, when we had this report done, he extensively looked at other municipalities. Mark and I typically, when we go through this exercise, we do that also. We, Mark calls, I call, we talk to other people. You know, Jim just pointed out, right now, we prepared this at this point, based on that, to give you that idea, to get the information. Now, when we come back with the master plan, we will, we will, that, we routinely do that. We, we, we never do it, we never do it in the bubble.
Yeah, it's in, it's in this report, Alex, and I'm sure that's what Forward Planning did as part of their contract, is to go out and.
But we, we do that, anytime we change any type of ordinance, we look at it. Because, and we would have talked to Jim, and Jim would have said, even if we didn't have this conversation, we would have said, he would have told us fifteen percent, and we would have, honestly, we would have put fifteen percent in there because it just makes sense.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at, I mean, any one of these issues, again, as Vince said, we're going to go and look at other towns we know that have similar suburban character, light industrial areas like this. And, you know, the issue on, you know, the, if there's a light, a, a, a truck, light industrial use versus a truck heavy, we'll look to see if other towns have addressed that. And, you know, frankly, we'll sit down, we'll go, okay, I liked how they did that, I don't really like that. And we basically look to see what other towns do, and we adapt it to what we've, what we would recommend for Franklin, what we feel you might be happy with and satisfied with. And that's what we'll present to you, is basically a, 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 a combination of what other towns have done, and again, what we would recommend.
New proposal, projects like PIMS, that would be approved use, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Vincent, I'm glad you mentioned that you have a consultant working for you and that the consultant should be able to put up something like I call incentive package to attract new businesses, especially with respect to this plan that you guys have. Could, could it be possible for you to provide us those probably research information from the consultant so that we can have our own input to attract those businesses?
You, you're talking about the, the, the new, the new report that he's going to do?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. We, I mean, we, I just went over him pretty much today, what we wanted. He's going to be giving a proposal
All right.
that will go to the economic, the development committee. And he will involve the, you know, the, the planning board. And whether it's myself and Mark or him, will come to the planning board to explain what he wants to do, and we'll seek your input, absolutely.
That's cool.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
On, on marketing, years ago, the town had something called the Industrial Development Committee that then became the Economic Development Committee. But we did have two economic coordinators before Vince, Julius Fargan many years ago. And, and what Julius found, and he was actually quite effective, he was quite a character. But there were two things that we discovered years ago. One was that the most effective marketing was in two parts. One, the, the builders of office buildings, warehouses, that sort of thing. The, the industrial real estate developers were the most effective people to go to. But the second thing was, and this is why I'm very glad Vince is doing this, is to work with the existing economic community within the township. Because the worst thing that can happen would be if somebody's thinking of coming to Franklin and they say, well, let me ask some of the people that are there. And if they should say, oh, no, you don't want to come here, this is, you know. So a good part of this is making sure that our existing industries and economic entities are, are happy here. Thank you.
Yeah, so we wait, next step. If you're, I mean, we haven't heard anyone say anything negative about it. So my assumption is, is that you want us to prepare the, the master plan. And you also, and the ordinance for some time for a discussion, whether it's a month from now or the, the first meeting in March, depending on how the workload goes. But sometime in the very near future, you have that. I'll also tell you that just, and I mentioned at the beginning, that sometime in the next month, we will be asking you to begin a discussion on the Hamilton Street recommendations in this plan. And we don't need to discuss it tonight, but if you want to take a look at it, because you were given a copy and also the link just to this, it's just the recommendations of breaking that street into three different type of zones, very similar uses, just maybe allowing a little bit different. We need to start that conversation. That's a little bit more in-depth. This is kind of what I would call the no-brainer type of thing. It's a little bit more in-depth in the, from a planning perspective, how we're going to, how they're going to do that. So we should have those discussions, because we would like to, after we do this, be in a position in a couple of months, if we decide to, to do the same type of thing on Hamilton Street.
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, I think you should, based on what we've heard tonight, you know, start working on it and incorporate the few suggestions you heard as, as best you can. And, you know, we will see what, as the details become clearer, we can tweak things. But I think in general, there's support for it. I think that's all we have on the agenda, so when's our next meeting? I mean, do we, we have it? February second?
Okay.
February seventh.
Oh, seventh.
Seventh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sounds good. So there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Motion moved.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.